So I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:33. Oh, good, we don't have community comments. That's good.
You should be able to comment here.
No, that's --
No, thank you.
You're all set. That's fine. So shall we head right into the entry plan, strategic plan update? I'm doing the agenda. I'm wondering how I should do -- I do have slides.
Stand wherever you'd like to stand. We'll circle around.
All right. You don't feel obligated to move. I should be able to.
Don't lose that.
When did we get that?
We've always had that. We have it up here.
We're very unruly up here.
You look very jealous. We can get you one, too.
I apologize. I probably would be mad at my mom instead of all that sherbert you have.
I like it.
Okay, so I'm going to make this quickly. I'm going to make this quick in the spirit of getting in touch with the weather forecast and everything else, try and move this along. So this news.
Kids will have to come home with insider information about this.
Everybody's wondering, and I have to work on my announcements. That's the thing that I got from my wife. I need to warm up properly. So actually, I'm really looking forward to presenting to you. This is an update on where we are in the strategic planning process. So I don't have a clicker, so I'm going to have to turn you into.
Clicker McCoy?
She's a woman. I demand to not interrupt. You're right. Okay. So as you know, the whole point of the entry plan that I've been on this trek, this journey, the whole point was to learn as much as I could from the stakeholders of the system. And that means all the stakeholders, not just the people directly in the schools, but the people who work in the community, the folks in town government. And it's to learn as much as I could from them, from conversations with them, to identify the strengths, the areas of need, or the expectations, quite honestly, of not just me, but the entire leadership team. It's also to open some lines of communication, develop relationships, and ultimately to lead us to a district strategy. The focus, obviously, of our district strategy would be on improving or ensuring instructional excellence and ensuring the health and well-being of our students. It's really the big, big areas of focus. So, and I'm going to post this so that folks can read this a little more clearly, because I apologize, I'm having a hard time reading it. But one of the first things that we set out to do was to identify the core values of the system. They've never really been established. If you go to Brookline, to their website, and look for their core values, you'll see it right when you get on there. You go to Wellesley, Newton, Lexington, Lincoln, Sudbury, and so on, you will see that these districts have core values. And they're usually four or five beliefs that they consider to be non-negotiable, that they are just hard and fast. So what I asked the leadership team to do this summer was to take a run at establishing what we think are the core values of this system. If we have done it, I can tell you, we didn't commit ourselves to them to the degree that we should have. Because if we had, I think I could ask everyone around this table if you know what the core values are of the district. And I have a feeling it might have been done in your last strategic planning process, but I just don't think that they stuck. So I asked the leadership team to take another run at this. And what they came up with was first and foremost, equity and excellence. So excellence has always been all over Dover Sherburne. Always, always, since I was a student here. The equity piece, they felt was important to include in there, because sometimes it's hard to keep an eye on excellence for everyone. Sometimes you have kids who don't perform at the same levels as other kids, but can we still expect excellence from them? Should we still have high expectations for those students? And I think that was the point. Let's make sure that we seek excellence, but let's make it equitable as well. We had a core value-centered recommendation for core values centered on respect and dignity. Obviously, we spent a lot of time on cultural awareness this year so far. It was a priority that came right to the surface in my meetings with all of you and with my meetings with the leadership team as I entered the system. It's really, really important, and it gives us a tool. It gives us a tool to hold ourselves accountable. So in a system where that respect and that dignity breaks down, the whole system can fall apart, because people start to mistrust each other, say hurtful things, and in order for a system to really be successful, there has to be a sense of trust. And you don't have that unless there's guaranteed respect. So this one, we thought was essential. They all are, frankly. The climate of care. This is about making sure, as you'll hear later about our emphasis on hashtag #WeAreDS, this is about ensuring that all of the people who enter our system feel equally valued and that we foster a climate where everyone feels equally valued and welcome. Hugely important, as I said to the kids at the Martin Luther King Assembly the other day, it sometimes is hard for me to believe that I've made my way all the way back to Dover Sherburne, such a prestigious system. And when I look back on my career, the thing that I think has catapulted me to this level has in fact been my belief that if you establish a system where every single person feels equally valued, you achieve great success. Because when people do not feel equally valued, it hinders their enthusiasm for learning. So this one, we thought was obviously important. Then finally, the commitment to community. We are two towns, three towns, really, Dover, Sherburne, and Boston. We are committed to these communities and making sure that our students recognize that it's not just where you go to school, it's this is your hometown. And when you get to be my age and you look back and you say, and you look at the town home, you say, "I went to school there, I went to second grade there." It's my hometown, and I feel a commitment to the community. We want that, we want to foster that. So those are the four core values that we came up with. I centered them around the mission, which is also unchanged. The mission, we've had this mission at Dover Sherburne for some time now, and so the Dover Sherburne schools -- sorry, where are my glasses? Can you read this for us?
The Dover Sherburne schools share a mission to inspire, challenge, and support all students as they discover and pursue their full potential.
Thank you. So these are kind of our big, big overarching, big picture ideals. Okay. So this whole process involved individual conversations, group conversations, review of financial and operational documents, and as well as academic documents. I'll save you the process of going through it, but you can see, if you look at that slide, there were a lot of conversations. A lot of people took advantage of the opportunity to weigh in with me, all of you here, as well as the leadership team, multiple teachers came in over the summer, multiple parents attended at multiple meetings. In fact, all of our support groups, I went to those meetings as best I could. There may have been one or two that I missed, but I think I hit them all. Parent coffees, teacher lunches, student lunches. These things were really helpful. I learned a lot. And then I took, and we can move to the next slide, I took all of that and tried to synthesize it. And I didn't want to do that alone. But you can see here, we have the vision at the top, that's the Dover Sherburne vision. We will distinguish ourselves through innovative teaching and learning experiences that inspire all students to pursue their individual passion for learning and excellence while we continue to be a nationally recognized, high-performance school system. That has been our vision. I think it should stay our vision, and I'm certainly open to feedback. The mission of the schools, the Dover Sherburne schools share a mission to inspire, challenge, and support all students as they discover and pursue their full potential, as Beth just read. Theory of action, if we are able to successfully inspire, challenge, and provide the necessary supports for all of our students, then they will be equipped with the tools necessary to achieve their fullest potential in a rapidly changing society, our core values that we are proposing, community equity and excellence, respect and dignity, climate of care. This is where we started. This is the big picture. Then we move to strategic objectives. And the strategic objectives -- I have been, because I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses, so I'm having a hard time reading these, so I'm just moving up front. So the strategic objectives, innovative teaching and learning, maintain excellence and rigor while adapting best practices and programs to prepare our graduates for success in a rapidly changing world. Health and well-being of students and staff, revise and enhance programs in support of social, emotional needs of our students and staff. Partnerships with families and communities, streamline and improve communication through the use of the latest technology and platforms. We want safe and state-of-the-art facilities, so we're striving to update the facilities and transform learning spaces to ensure that students are safe and surrounded by cutting-edge structures and resources. And finally, resource efficiency, which is to provide the highest quality education in an efficient and productive manner. So these become kind of our big folders, our big goals. And I'm hoping that when you look at that, you say to yourselves, "I've heard these, I've heard these kinds of interests by the people I speak with and come into contact with, so I'm glad that these are up here." Hoping that you'll say that, "That's what I heard." And so we'll go to the next slide, and we're going to cruise through this. But we move from vision, mission, and core values in the big picture to strategic objectives, which were those five things that I just read, to strategic priorities, which are more specific goals underneath the strategic objectives, to the actual action steps. And those action steps, all of this becomes what drives or continues to move us in this cycle. So this isn't something that I'm proposing that we do and just put away, but rather something that we reflect on all the time. And if I've heard correctly, in the past, when you had a strategic plan, it actually was woven into the agendas for your school committee meetings, so that you would reflect back on the work that you were doing in the school committee. It's really a system of goals that gets reviewed annually. So we're marking it as a three-year plan, because we can't do all of it in a year and a half. But we would like to continue to reflect on it, because there might be things that we say, "We're just going to have to move off of this, we can't do it," or "This one was easier than we thought, so we can add something." Did I do that? Oh, nice. So.
Don't need you click.
That wasn't like moving a boulder at all. Okay, so a strategic objective was resource efficiency. I'm using this as an example. Underneath that, we would have strategic priority, one, two, and we actually have many more done. I've worked with the leadership team to develop what we think are the strategic priorities, but they need more work. They just need to be streamlined, there are some redundancies, we want it to be right. But we have taken all of our findings and we have developed them into strategic priorities. After those are completed, and we'll share those with you in April, at the Joint School Committee in April, complete, so then you'll have the strategic objectives, the strategic priorities, and in the summer, with the leadership team, we'll do the next steps. So if this was, "Conduct a review of special education resources, programs, and services to ensure vertical and horizontal alignment, equity, effectiveness across the Dover and Sherburne schools pre-K to 12." In other words, are our special ed delivery, our services, are these consistent? Do they line up so that when our kids in special education come up to the middle school, they've had a similar experience? Because if they haven't, we're not necessarily being as efficient as we could be. Because if we then have to backload services into our middle school kids just because we weren't consistent, then we're wasting resources and time. So this might be the priority. Some of the action steps that we might take would be consulting with outside specialists in the field, review the delivery of language-based learning disability services within the schools, and submit a written review, complete with recommendations. That might be for the Special Education Director. That's who's accountable or responsible for it. That's the step. Consulting with an outside specialist in the field, review the delivery of life skills services within the public schools of Dover and Sherburne, submit a written review, complete with recommendations. Again, more than likely, Chris Smith. We would have benchmarks, so 50% of the recommendations from the review have been instituted, 100% of the recommendations from the review have been instituted, and the timeline would be one year and the second year. So that's how this whole thing would come together. Any questions to this point? So I wanted to give you some of the findings by theme. I can't, I think we've run out of time for me to go through all of them, but let's go through just some quickly. I'll move as quickly as I can. Innovative teaching and learning. This is, you know, this came through. "There's a strong interest in reinstituting the Academic Excellence Committee to review our pre-K to 12 curriculum offerings in comparison to the highest-performing school systems in the nation." Okay, I'm going to leave it at that, because essentially, people want us to go out there and make sure that what we're offering is consistent with what the best in the best are offering, and not necessarily just here. Quite honestly, I think I've been to Finland and studied their schools. I think we could learn a lot from other places. Whether we're going to send it, the administrative team off to Finland is another question. Any volunteers? But you actually can learn quite a bit from studying other countries. "So there's interest in reinstituting this Academic Excellence Committee to go and find out what's out there." "Professional development for all staff needs to be systematically planned and organized to ensure staff have ample differentiated opportunities for relicensure and consistent exposure to best practices in education." It shouldn't be a situation where we just throw things out there, "Huh, this seems pretty popular, I saw it at a conference, it seems like a good thing to put in front of our teachers." It really should make sense to the teachers. How often have those of us who are in and been in teaching been to a professional development day and said, "This really has very little to do with what I do?" And that's a problem. So we have to differentiate it and make it make sense to the people who are on the ground, people who are working with our kids. "The educator evaluation system and the Qualified Peer Observer Program should be revisited for effectiveness and assessed for impact on teacher development and student learning." Additionally, systems should be put in place to ensure that all faculty receive clearly stated, standards-based substantive feedback in a timely fashion and are accountable for demonstrated growth. Evaluation systems are only good, effective to the point that you're using it properly and that the feedback that the teachers get is useful. They have to see it as useful. They have to see it as linking back to something. So this is something that people said over and over. Health and well-being of students. Again, I'm going to post this thing, so I'm not going to go through all of these, but clearly there's an interest in seeing the Challenge Success Program continue and for it to take a dive deeper into non-academic stressors. So the academic stressors are a key concern at Dover Sherburne, there's no question about it, and we've identified that, and wisely so. But are there any others? The students, great feedback from the elementary kids and their parents, frankly, and the middle school kids, saying, "We wish we had more time, like downtime every once in a while." A lot of the parents saying, "Now, it can't just be the kids on a treadmill all day long. There has to be some kind of downtime." Speaking of the fens, they build in maybe two hours a day of recess for elementary kids, certainly one hour, the places that I visited, right up into sixth and seventh grade. So we actually had a passing time when I was a kid here, from the middle school, from the school, the junior high to the cafeteria, it was about a 12-minute, maybe 15-minute passing time, but it was downtime. Call it recess, call it whatever you want, we were outside, and that's where we spent some time. It was good. So that came out a lot, I heard that a lot. We'll keep going. Partnerships with families. So the parents have said to me frequently, in my coffees and PTL meetings, that communication, sometimes it feels like a bombardment, you get tons of information, email blasts, and it's hard to keep track of, and wondered whether or not we could somehow look at our communication, maybe establish some kind of communication plan for the system, so that there's not as much overlap and not as much bombardment. I don't know if that's doable in this day and age, but what's putting a committee together to look at it is. So an action step that might come out of that is exactly that, forming a committee that looks at our written communication, that looks at our website, all of the above. So that came out. People do absolutely pride themselves on the success of these schools and our ranking, for better or for worse. They absolutely pride themselves on it. I heard it a lot. This one about information from the central office, that people feel as if they don't really hear from the central office about our district priorities, our goals, curriculum instruction. So a natural kind of action item might be for some kind of newsletter that's not overlapping with everyone else, but that's practical and makes sense from the central office, perhaps something from myself, or from Ms. McCoy, or Special Education, or even the business office. So these are good examples of findings from that particular piece. I'll just take this quick one. Safe and state-of-the-art facilities. Definitely heard from folks that they want us to look at security in our schools. It's a bigger question, obviously. It's going to take some time to delve into that. But certainly, looking at the technology that's currently in place at the elementary schools, is it sufficient? Is it consistent? Is it current? And at the region, what about the ability to quickly lock down if we needed to? Could we do that, or secure the facilities quickly? People mentioned that there's an absence of cameras at entryways and really across the campus. Well, that's true. And perhaps by choice, but it's something for us to look at. So let's keep going. Resource efficiency, I already talked about it in my sample. That was one of them, was the delivery of special education. Obviously, you know, because these two communities are heavily dependent on property taxes, other sources of revenue or cost-saving measures should be investigated annually as part of the budget development process. So we have to do that. The towns are depending on us to do that as a school system. So obviously, you do that, but perhaps making ourselves more aware, perhaps being more specific and intentional in the way we do that moving forward. This is really about our salaries and the fact that the communities have clearly committed to this system. So the next steps are really to adjust this draft of the district strategy so that it includes those strategic priorities. Again, we'd like to shoot for April, the joint meeting of that. We need more time to work on that. And then share that with the entire school committee, and then work on the action plan in the summer over at the administrators retreat. So that's where we, as the leadership team, would look at these strategic priorities and say, "Well, what would we do to meet each of these?" So that's really the big picture. What I'm asking for from all of you, again, this will be posted, so I'll make sure that you can access it, and we'll do that tomorrow. What I'm asking from all of you is really to go through the chairs, if possible, and take a look at this, and if there are things that you think are missing, or could be shored up, or be more specific, shoot those to the chairs, and if the chairs feel as if there's really strong interest from across the boards to influence us in one way or another, that's fine, we'll definitely listen to the feedback. So I really do want to thank the leadership team. They spent a lot of time on this, and everyone put in.
Finding this will be more than what we saw here, we just put this presentation out. It sounded like you said there were more findings.
Yes, in April, there we will have, we'll list out all of the strategic priorities. So right now, those findings, we've turned those into strategic priorities.
But those were findings that were listed underneath this topic, right?
Yes.
Will there be more findings, or was that just a?
That's just a sampling, because the findings are, some of the findings were much more generic, some of them were kind of.
I'd be interested in seeing all the findings, if that's possible.
Well, I think what you find is that when we put forward the strategic priorities, for the most part, they align with a finding. The difference is, we might consolidate some of those, so it doesn't become, you know, a 100-page document, because, but, you know, we could talk more about that for sure.
Do you assume that the order in which they're listed has any bearing on how often or how strongly the issue came up, or is that?
Well, we did intentionally put them in that order. Not because, we, I can't say 100%, with 100% certainty that, you know, it came up board that instruction was the highest priority, but I would say it is pretty closely aligned with the way the concerns came forward. For example, not as many people came forward saying, "You know, we really think we should do something about resource efficiency." But the people who did were making a pretty strong case for why we should, whereas we heard a lot about student health, mental health, and well-being, and actually the faculty as well, you know, taking care of the faculty. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll right into the goals update?
Yes, so I included in your packet a list of my goals that you approved earlier in the year, and I updated those to let you know what progress that I've made on those. It was essentially at the mid-cycle point, and so I just wanted you to have that information. I'm not sure you wanted me to go through those. It's pretty self-explanatory, but certainly if you have questions or.
Does anybody have any questions about, about the update on the goals?
I don't have questions per se, but I do want to say thank you. The feedback that you provided was very specific and measurable, and it's easy to follow, the actions you're taking, so thank you. I just, I'll play with you for a long time, and I appreciate your feedback.
Did you have anything you wanted us to know?
No, mainly the. No, mainly that, just reminding you, I know you have.
How busy you've been.
Well, I could say that. I have been busy, but it's for a good cause. No, just to remind you that this, these are the standards by which superintendents are evaluated in Massachusetts. So, I know you know that, but I'm just refreshing your memory on that. And I know that you have a superintendent's evaluation subcommittee. So, you know, you need to keep an eye on that, and we do really, that timeline, because before long, you know, we hit April or May and we're out of time.
Right, so I believe.
Because we only have one more joint meeting.
Just so, who we have for new members, Greg. The Union 50 and the region come together to form the evaluation committee. And I think there's people who have been named from each school committee who participate in that. They pull together documentation, communication to the membership, members complete evaluations, submit them in. It's summarized and discussed at the April joint meeting.
I haven't done that in a while.
That's right.
We haven't done that in a while, so. Just in the back of your mind, as committee members, probably I think March is.
Probably most of us haven't done that process. It'll be new for the majority of the members, I think.
The good news is you have a process.
Yeah, yes, yes.
And it's a process, but I think it's effective.
Long before my time.
And it's consistent with other systems. So, I'm just putting it out there so that, you know, you keep it in mind since you haven't had to do that in this.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on goals? All right, we'll move on to item four, the special education update.
Thank you. So, I provided a memo in the packet there. I just want to highlight some of the aspects that are put in print there. So, the special education department in October met for the first time as a vertical group. So, we've never met under my direction as a pre-K to 12 group. So, all of the professionals in special education got together for training around East Bed. And the feedback that I heard at that meeting was asking for more and more of that, more and more of those opportunities. So, I developed a smaller grouping and asked people to self-select into those groups. Education's close.
I think I just went into a phone book.
So, I established what I called choirs. And I called them choirs because I was really tired of all of the other language that we use around how we call ourselves in groups and education. So, instead of PLCs or committees or this or that, I called them choirs. And the other professionals thought that was fun and different. And so, it has nothing to do with singing, trust me. So, teachers and professional service providers selected a choir to participate in, which meant that they would meet two times and talk more, dive more deeply into topics together. And we would do that as a vertical group. So, again, that pre-K to 12 experience, which was pretty exciting. So, the first choir was looking at the B grid and looking at how we provide service and what that service is, particularly the service in the gen ed classrooms. So, looking closely at the IEPs that we've written, trying to understand and have a professional conversation around what is specially-designed instruction versus support? How do we determine that on the IEP? What does that look like? Are we doing the same thing across all of the schools? And it was a very powerful conversation. So, the choir met twice and had really intense conversations and good, healthy conversations, I say, I would say, about that. And then we put together a training module and shared that back with the whole department meeting when we met again as a whole department. So, that was our way to bring that information back. And then I have actually since followed that up with individual department meetings in each building following up that conversation. So, really trying to not do a one-shot PD opportunity or a really surface conversation, but trying to find ways to have that deeper, richer conversation that really can change culture over time. And because what I'm finding from our teachers is that we're continuously going back to the understanding of building ourselves as a systems of school and not seeing ourselves siloed as Sherburne or Chikering or the region, but really understanding that we're educating the same child through a system of schools. So, the second choir that has just begun is the choir on the continuum. And the group of people that came together for that choir is really highly interested in looking at the transitions for students. So, again, that same notion of thinking about ourselves as a system of schools and what does that look like for the individual student and family as they travel from building to building or even from grade to grade and what are the services looking like? So, a lot of what Andrew is talking about through the strategic plan. The last choir that will talk, that will, that will meet in February and March will be on the eligibility process and helping our professionals have conversations about how are we determining eligibility? What data, what data is each building using? Is it consistent? Are we using the same testing protocols? There has been some discrepancy, I think, in that. But over the course of the year that I was here previously, a year and a half now, we have moved more and more to more similar protocols and just getting the right people in the conversation so that we are looking at aligning our process and our conversation. I think it's really important to me that I help our professionals to understand that we are, we are talking to our families and they're the same families moving through the system. And I want that experience to be the same for parents as they travel through the system and to not feel, oh, this is very different or when they come to the region or they transition from preschool to kindergarten or whatever that might look like. So, really trying to help align those experiences by having those deep conversations with our professionals in the building. The language-based program here at the region, Anne Larson has been our consultant. She's coming in again on the 25th to sort of do an additional day of touring with me where we'll look closely at the strategy. We'll look into the classrooms together and look for examples of the strategies that have been taught through these many different consultations that have happened. And so, we're looking for evidence of those strategies in place and trying to understand the depth of that application. The life skills program is, here at the high school, is running well and at the middle school. And we're engaged in having our teachers go and see our students, our DS kids that are out of district, and then have those, welcome those families to come in for a tour in district so that we're building some relationships with those families. The strategic learning center at Chikering is servicing children now from grades one to five. In the past, we weren't able to capture that younger age group of students, but we are at this point with some additional resources that we realigned out at Chikering. It's a, it's a great program that is definitely meeting the needs of some particular students in Chikering. In the integrated preschools of Dover and Sherburne, the application process is well underway for this year. Parents, in fact, are sending in their checks, their deposits now. And we are, we were able to accept all of the students at Chikering with the understanding that we would need to open a second. So, right now, we run one and a half classes at Chikering. And for the fall, we're looking at running two full classes at Chikering. So, we were able to accept all of our students for Chikering. And at County Hill, we will continue to run the two classes. And we had to put some families on waiting list at Chikering. We're considering running a pilot program out at Chikering to discuss bringing, bringing students. Right now, it's a four-and-a-half-day program. And we're looking at making it a five-day program. So, right now, Wednesday afternoons is not an option for families to choose. And we're discussing piloting, adding that half-day Wednesday back into the schedule or into the schedule for the pre-K students. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. It sounds great. Anybody having questions?
I have one sort of question and comment. The report is fabulous, Christine, and it covers so much work that's being done that perhaps we haven't heard about in this way before. And when you come and do it next time or you update it, can you talk a little bit about what does all this mean for students and families?
Sure.
Because I think that's a lot of who's paying attention to our meetings and they want to hear, you know, what we're doing academically and socially, emotionally. But as users, the clients of the system, what does it mean for them?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes.
What's a B grid?
Really good question. So, within the IEP, there's a page that delineates the service that a student has. It's divided into three sections. It's the A grid, which is consult services. The B grid is the service that a student in special education receives in the gen ed classroom. And the C grid is service that a special education service student receives outside of the gen ed classroom. So, it's special ed students in the gen ed setting with support.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Moving on to item five, the RDS.
Perhaps you must take a seat up here just in case there's a sound issue. Good evening. So, as you heard from Dr. Keough, both he and myself have been doing a lot of listening since we joined the district officially on July 1st. And obviously, there is a large plan coming forward with lots of steps to be taken to move Dover, Sherburne forward, farther into the 21st century and supporting our kids and faculty as we do that. But when we began in July and started to meet with our leaders and our leadership team, we wanted to know what can we work on right now? What is a priority across all four schools that is going to make an impact on our families and our students right away? And so, what we heard was there was a need to make sure that we were supporting all students. So, we are supporting students from Dover, from Sherburne, from Boston. We are supporting our regular ed and our special education students. We are supporting our students who may be Christian or Muslim. We are supporting our students who may be transitioning and questioning their identity. So, that is what we decided to do. We decided that under the umbrella of social-emotional learning, we wanted to look at what is called cultural responsiveness. So, this, we launched with the leadership team in the summer. And we've been working with our educators since day one on this idea of cultural responsiveness, which has evolved into VRDS. And we're going to kind of catch you up to speed today. So, what is cultural responsiveness? It's the idea that we are going to learn from and relate to each other respectfully, understanding cultures that are like our own, but also understanding, respecting people from our culture, respecting people from cultures that are different than our own. How does that relate to the classroom? Well, clearly, as educators, we bring our own culture to our teaching. But we also need to understand the learners in front of us and the culture that they bring so that we can interact and make sure that every child is meeting their full potential, which you've heard earlier is obviously our goal and our mission as a district. So, what is culture? I don't know how many of you have seen the cultural iceberg, but it's this idea of, these are all of the aspects that make up us as individuals. So, whether it's your sexual orientation, your beliefs, your work location, your learning style, your heritage, your social status, these are all pieces that make up who you are and the culture that you bring to any environment. Some of them are above the waterline. So, just by looking at someone, you might be able to determine, generally speaking, their age, generally speaking, what nationality or ethnicity they may be. But there are several things under the waterline that you'll never get to know about a person unless you ask. So, the question is, how do we as educators ask our students what's under this waterline so we can meet their individualized needs in the classroom? The faculty, we as a leadership team and then at many of the schools wrote "I am from" poems. It's basically a template that you fill in the blanks, explaining many of your aspects of the iceberg. It's, you know, as poetic as you want to be. If you want to stick to the template, if you're a math and science person, that's fine too. But we all wrote them and over the fall and even now, people are sharing them out at faculty meetings to the extent that they're comfortable doing so. And so, we're learning about ourselves as educators, but also about our professional peers and what they bring to the table and how we can support ourselves in working with children. There's been laughter, there's been tears. It's been really powerful, kind of looking at our own identity and who we are. So, then it was time to come together as a full community again. We met together in August to kick off the school year. And of course, we have the full day of professional development the Monday after Thanksgiving. So, we had all 200 educators coming together. And it was an opportunity to dive in saying, "We understand what cultural responsiveness is. We've looked at ourselves in the mirror and what we bring to the table. What about those kids in front of us?" So, we structured a day where our faculty came actually to the middle school and we've had all of our events here. There was a welcome ceremony in the auditorium. Dr. Keough welcomes everyone. We had a keynote speaker, who's Dr. Carol Blake from Boston. He's a former headmaster. And he had a lot of things to say about what a culturally responsive district should look like. And then we had two workshops. So, faculty had a menu of 20 workshops they could choose from. And they got to spend an hour in each with a little bit of a break in the middle. There was activity at lunch. So, then this was an opportunity, not only to dive into the individual buckets or pieces of the iceberg, but we also realized that we are forming a community. So, we provided the faculty with two opportunities for activities. They could either do an art project that was focused on reflecting as who they are and, you know, what they want to tell about themselves versus what perhaps is folded and glued together that nobody's ever going to know. So, for those people who like art or are artistic, they had that opportunity. And then there was a fitness activity as well for those people who like to get up and move and, you know, run hula hoops and bounce basketballs and build team that way. And what was really neat is you had the preschool teachers working with the 10th-grade teachers and science teachers, working with math teachers. So, it was all mixed up. So, again, that idea of a community of schools that were all part of the same district. And some people chose to, you know, take their creative side and go to the art projects. And some people chose to, you know, give themselves a challenge. And they say, "I hate art, I'm going to give that a shot." Remember what it's like to be a student who's forced to take math for four years. And then we had lunch together, which was great. Again, a little time to breathe, a little time to talk, a little time to say, "How are you?" And "Who are you?" After lunch, we divided within this building into our four schools so we could talk and share about what we learned in the morning and how it applied to our individual schools. And then we came back together in the afternoon for a closing assembly. Again, some remarks from Dr. Keough and a musical performance from one of our faculty members and his band. That was the day. But before we could dive into this, we had to ground ourselves in why are we here as educators? Why are we spending this whole day talking about this? We know the iceberg, we know who we are, but who are these kids that we're teaching? So, we went out and we interviewed some of the kids and said, "Here's an opportunity for your educators to learn how to better help you in the classroom. If there was one thing that you'd want your teacher to know about you that thinks, that you think would make them a better teacher or make the learning experience better for you, what would that be?" So, we created this video.
That I act differently from the other girls. And I do different things from the other girls.
Like what?
Like basketball. Maybe everyone learns differently. But sometimes I can need a lot of help learning. Sometimes I don't understand the question. And that, like, sometimes it's hard for me to answer.
I have a lot of, like, after-school activities and they go kind of late. So, like, sometimes he gives us a lot of homework so I don't have, like, a lot of time to finish it.
And I wish my teacher knew about me and said I like to read nonfiction books.
I wish my teacher knew that I like, that I like to argue during class.
I wish my teacher knew that I play, I play a lot of instruments and I play the piano and the clarinet and stuff.
I'm in 7th grade and I'm an uncle.
I'm in 7th grade and I want to get into an Ivy League college.
My favorite and most strong subject is math. And I'd do better at it if I'm like, either like sitting in front of the class or the teacher shows us like a visual or some visual presentation.
I learn better when my classrooms have a slow pace because then I can really feel like I understand the material. I also enjoy doing hands-on activities to really learn and not just sit in a classroom straight for an hour. I get very stressed when quizzes are announced last minute.
I would like you just to know that it's not always easy being the only black person in a history and English classroom talking about, like. in a history or English classroom talking about, like, history and slavery and stuff like that.
I think I would want teachers to know that I really like a classroom that's engaging and where you can be interactive in different elements. And I like experimenting with creativity and playing into different elements beyond just rigid structures.
I, like, learn best for watching someone do something. And if you show me how to do it, I will most likely remember. But if I read the directions, I'm probably going to go up to you 30 times and go, how are you doing this again? I don't know. But, um, so I'm a visual textile learner.
Um, I would say that my, one of my biggest, like, weaknesses is test anxiety. So right before I take a test, I get really stressed out and I wind up forgetting a lot of the stuff I studied. So if I get a little more time to review beforehand, that would be awesome.
I'm an English second language learner, which is initially not my native language. And that is kind of hard for me to be in high school because, like, some of the teachers don't understand that part. Even though they say like, okay, everyone learn new language, like, what is it called? New vocabulary. However, the native language people know what is a prefix and suffix is and they, like, can make a connection to the word that they know. But for me, it's harder because my vocabulary probably like only 2,000 maybe. So yeah, this is my, I want them to understand that all.
I would like my teachers to know that I have a difficulty saying no to things. So that puts a lot of things on my plate. So I have a lot of pressure and a lot of stress after school and just a lot of stuff to do. And there's not a lot of time to do all my work and it's just a lot of built-up stress and anxiety, so.
I would like my teachers to know that I don't like being compared to, like, my siblings or people in my, in my class. I don't know, it just gives me a lot of stress. Yeah.
All right. So that's how we grounded our day with the faculty and reminded them why we were there, that we're a community of learners, all four schools of both towns, and our Boston students coming together. But we each have individual needs and individual pieces of our iceberg that we want our teachers to know about and be able to reach so that we can do our best in school. So we provided 20 different workshops, being Muslim in America, learning difficulties, engaging in creative conversations, challenge success, and what does that look like with the middle school and the elementary schools as it starts to trickle down? Educating Boys of Color, microaggressions, white privilege, gender identity, hip hop and critical pedagogy, race, class and gender, the mental health of students, which you heard some of the kids talking about, supporting students after trauma, welcome to our schools and how do we make sure that all of our faculty members, including our administrative assistants, who are often the first people to greet parents and families and students as they come in, how do we make sure that they're culturally responsible and they're meeting the needs of our families? So faculty got to choose two of those and engage in them throughout the day. And then, as I said, at lunchtime, they were able to choose between art and fitness activity. What did it look like? So here are some photos throughout the day. We, many of the classes as they began, started with norms and developing norms for conversations. You can see people were up and interacting. Dr. Keo, this is probably the most engaged he's been with scissors since he was at Pine Hill as a student, doing the art project for teachers meeting together. I think that is Ms. Deborah Keegan, line folding, doing some activities and team building. And what did we learn at the end of the day? What does culturally responsive teaching look like? It's these principles that we need students to have the equal opportunities, the equity that Dr. Keo spoke to in his core values. We want to make sure that the kids are prepared to be involved in a very dynamic world where there are people of all different races, genders, et cetera. That we want teachers to make sure they're facilitating the learning and not necessarily leading the learning. That we as a school are working to support the world and making sure that all people have opportunities, student-centered classrooms. And that we are looking at not only the teaching that we're doing, but the practices and the policies that we have in place to make sure that they are supporting all of our students as well. So those were our takeaways again. Each school has talked about them individually and what they look like back in their home territories. So what did the teachers say about this? As you know, professional development has been a topic of conversation and a topic of interest throughout all of this. So the professional development team and Monique and I did our best to try to meet the needs and the requests of the teachers. Here's what they said. Please do more like it. People were disappointed when the workshops were over. They asked that next time they consider the workshops to be longer than an hour. They wanted to dive deeper. Rewarding experience, speaking with different people throughout the day really allowed for a greater awareness of differences among us, but a common goal at the same time. Here are ideas of how to make the workshops longer. Get rid of morning breakfast. Offer food so you can grab it and go because they wanted more time for the discussion and the learning. Let this format make, it makes PD much more interesting and relevant, which we know was a request of our teachers. And really, a lot of people are saying they want to continue this conversation. Let's not make this a one-shot deal. How do we continue this going and going and going and going so that it becomes part of our social, emotional, our challenge success conversation in addition to obviously, you know, the academic excellence? So where did this evolve to? So we've learned as educators about who we are, who our students are, and now it's time to bring it back to the classroom, knowing what it should look like. So that's where the we are DS came in. We had ordered these shirts for the teachers to wear to the PD. So again, breaking down those walls between four schools. And we said, why not buy them for the kids too and break down those walls between four schools? So we gave out the shirts. Kudos to all the administrative assistants who did the counting and the sorting and the swapping of sizes. You know, we are DS is not their favorite thing at the moment. But we gave out the shirts and then the teacher started to ask the kids, well, what does this mean? And that started the conversation about we're a community, but we're individuals within the community, but regardless, we're going to respect and support each other. So just some pictures from the district YPD Day at Chicory, Pine Hill, you have the Sea of Blue at their all-school meeting. Again, we are DS, we are a community, but we're individuals. So many students chose to decorate the back of their shorts representing who they are and what they like. The middle school doing activities, they had an all-school meeting at the middle school that day. Our faculty had their blue on as well. The high school kids. And so when we asked them, well, what do these shirts mean? It's not just a 3D giveaway, go throw it in the drawer with the rest of your shirts, but there's meaning behind it and what is that? And of course, you have developmentally different level of response who you ask. But here are some examples. It means Dover and Sherburne are united. We all belong here in Dover Sherburne. We work together as a team and always welcome new ideas. We celebrate our community and support everyone who is a part of it. And it doesn't matter where you come from or what your background is, we're all together and included, no one is left out. So that being said, here are some of the other initiatives that support this full day of professional development that we had. There's been several cultural presentations and celebrations, as we see with the CSA and the PTO is bringing in, in terms of our elementary kids. We had the World Culture Day at the middle school. We've had assemblies at the high school. There's conversations happening both within the community and with educators who can voluntarily come and talk about issues of race and gender and things that are happening in the larger community and our own. There's been an infusion of multicultural books, especially at the elementary level. And we're starting to look at the curriculum K through 12 to make sure that we're representing different voices and perspectives. The P squad at the elementary level are working with Roots and Wings to become students' leaders, who then at the middle school are actually starting to facilitate conversations with their peers as they did in MLK Day. The conversations happening at the high school where, again, kids are coming together to talk about a number of different things, kind of break down those walls, figure out how to have those greatest conversations. Next steps, what we heard from our PD committee and our faculty and our leaders is we want to facilitate optional discussions, again, more conversations, whether it's with kids or with faculty, to create some student focus groups. What are our kids actually experiencing? Do we really understand what it is or are we imagining things that we think might be? Identify go-to people at each school. So if I want to have a difficult conversation in my history class, who can I lean on within my building who's already having conversations so I can kind of play out, how will I frame this conversation? What happens if the conversation goes in this direction? And get ideas and support from each other. Parent events, Monique and I are already starting to organize with the support of the leadership team something for the parents to come together and engage in some conversation. People want a number of the presenters from November 27th to come back. So we're trying to figure out where in the schedule we can make that happen as long as we continue this one. And that's it. Any questions? The good news is that, as you can see, these shirts go with any outfit. So we do have shirts for all of the city members. So anyway, out of the way, take a shirt, there's large, there's extra large, and there's also our mannequins, all free. Take home and wear it with pride.
Change my size.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just add one more thing, actually, two quick ones. Okay. The, Beth may have mentioned or not when she said, welcome to our schools. We actually made a conscious decision to include all staff in this because it's not just the teachers who needed this professional development. It's actually our secretaries, our aides, even our custodians were able to come into some of this stuff. So that was an important piece of this. That was a decision made by the leadership team. And the other thing that hopefully you're seeing, because this is the goal of having a strategy, is that these things are already happening. You might remember that when we first talked, when I presented my entry plan, people said, well, will it be done in time for people to develop their school improvement plans? They're, they're doing it. You heard Chris's presentation very much linked up with mine and that was sheer coincidence, but it really wasn't a coincidence. Beth's work is linking up very much with the stuff that we have in the strategic plan. So there's a method to the madness, but I'm really excited about it because I think it's, we're moving in a positive direction, so it's great stuff. Thank you for that presentation. Thanks. All right. Item six, policy update. Do we have a policy committee person that wants to discuss this or do you need for discussion?
I will speak to it, but I don't believe there's discussion. This policy was presented at the last joint meeting as the first read. This is the second read and we take a vote by committee.
It's upgraded.
And it was upgraded to meet some items brought forward in the coordinated program review to align with state law and policy.
Let me do this, one motion and then vote by committee. So I entertain a motion to approve the student discipline policy.
Some of, at the region, some of, second at the region, second. Thank you.
Dover? Do you accept the motion as stated? So moved. Second? Pine Hill? Second.
Call for vote at the region. Those in favor? Motion carries.
Dover, those in favor? Sherburne, those in favor? Yes, carries, okay.
Thank you.
Done. Item seven, vote to approve the school calendar. There's no discussion, right?
Exactly, Greg. That's why I'm laughing.
All right. I have a question. Here we go. Want you to just give a quick overview of where we are. Okay. So the budget, I mean, the budget, the calendar that's, the calendar that's, the calendar that's in front of you is actually exactly like this year's calendar. Starting right in that last week of August and the kids come back, you know, three days before Labor Day weekend. Very similar to this year. And quite honestly, if the committees voted to approve it as is, I'm quite content with that. I did want to put out there, because I've heard this a few times, the possibility of, of extending the Labor Day weekend.
Yes, it is.
So it's, and I, essentially, what, what we've done is some research on what areas school systems do. Many start after Labor Day. Those who start before Labor Day frequently will extend the Labor Day weekend. Sometimes they start after Labor Day based on whether it's in the, Labor Day falls on the first, second, third, or fourth. So when it starts on the third, first, second, third, or fourth, they start after Labor Day typically. And when it falls on the fifth, sixth, or seventh, they start before Labor Day weekend. I just did a little research to see what other systems around us are doing and also checked in with the leadership team to see if this is something that they think would be problematic for the system to consider. Now, given that, that we don't have another joint meeting coming up and we haven't had another read of just the regular calendar, just the one with no changes whatsoever, I know that putting this out there is, is a big ask. And I wouldn't put it out there unless I, I thought there was a possibility that the committees would unanimously support. So are you saying that you, you, this, you're proposing this? You think this is a good idea? I'm proposing it.
Is that, any of the rationale, additional rationale that you want to share? I mean, you mentioned what other districts are doing.
Well, I think that the reason a lot of districts consider this is because once upon a time, we always started after Labor Day. And then it started to, people started to change that because we backed up against the end of June and that became problematic for people's summer plans, camps, et cetera, et cetera. So they started going before Labor Day. And sometimes, depending on where Labor Day falls, because starting before Labor Day doesn't seem like such a big deal, but when Labor Day is on the first, second, third, or fourth, you're actually fighting pretty far back into August. So I just think frankly, in the, in the spirit of challenge success and keeping it, you know, taking care of our teachers as well as their students and as well as our families, if we're going to start the last week of August, extending that Labor Day by one day, that weekend feels like the end of the summer and it's a nice way to, to end the summer. And it also, in my experience, having been through this, makes for a smoother transition, I believe, when the kids come back after Labor Day. Because all the, kind of getting, getting, getting back together and getting reacquainted and kind of working out the handbooks and all the policies, et cetera, et cetera, gets taken care of so that when they come back after Labor Day, they go right to work. But they're not coming back after Labor Day in this, right?
So Cora, I have a question and it's not actually on that day. It's on June 17th, being the last day of school on Monday of that week. I can tell you, we have, at the region, lived through this and under different headmasters. If there are finals on that day or makeup finals, people are trying to get excused, teachers are trying to have finals on different days, families have already got vacation at the elementary school and students don't show up. So, you know, if there's another way to manage that, so the last day without snow days can be a...
But I guess the question to that, because I, I had the first reaction of, oh, that's a tough Monday. But then I wondered, how many years are there, what's, how many times do we actually have zero snow days? And if, if the majority of years end up being at least one, two, or three snow days over the course of the winter, we're into that week anyway. So whether we, I mean, then whether we end on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, the probability is you're going to be in that week anyway, I guess was how I was thinking it through. Because I had the same first.
Yeah. We had, last year, ended on time, right?
I will say, I did run this by the entire leadership team and actually returned to some of them with follow-up questions, including John, about, about the fact that September is broken up anyhow and...
Right, they go, one, two, three. Four weeks without a full week of school.
His position, and I respect, you know, I respect his opinion, as opposed to who's been running the high school for a few years now, but his position is that it can be done, and he thinks it would be a good thing.
My thought is, it seems like September's short anyway with a couple of holidays, and just in terms of stress and everything else, it doesn't seem like it would be that beneficial. I don't know how many, what percentage of the kids play fall sports, they're probably back anyway. That's quite a decent percentage. So, you know, is it, how many folks is it really helping? But I don't have a kid in the system, so...
But if you look across the whole district, the fall sports in the high schools...
It's about half, I think it's about 300 roster spots in the fall. So it'd be less than 50% of the high school students.
Yeah, I'll answer that.
But I'm just saying, I'm answering that as a specific question.
So did John discuss...
How does that impact sports anyways, regardless of the decision?
Some kids are back anyway.
There's no school, there's no games.
But calendars say we're going to start in August.
Right. Doesn't affect that. Yeah, it just would mean no practice that day.
It's no practice or no games. That's one mistake. And I just have one other question. I know when we've done this in the past, we've heard from AP teachers, that they're already behind the eight ball by, you know, New England's starting school late, so what does that mean? And it's one less day, it would sound like a whole lot, but I know their schedules are tight.
My other question is, and I know, once again, it's just one day, but then when you add also the snow days, us compared to the rest of the country, if you're involved in summer programs, could be camps, it could be academic things that draw from across the country, most other places outside of New England, get out much earlier. And I know when we had this conversation, however many years ago, I don't know how long was it, but it was like an hour and a half conversation about it, but I do know that it does back up for kids, not just at the high school, also middle school, and even potentially elementary school, that are doing camping programs. The start date, if we have snow days, it causes stress and kids leave to go do the summer programs anyway. So then what are we...
What are we accomplishing?
What are we accomplishing here?
Was there any thought of a half day on that Friday? And do we have any data early release, or...
A half day's your joke. I mean, if Chris went out before Christmas, was a joke.
It comes as a day.
I'm sorry to react.
Seems to me like the question is, as always, do you start after Labor Day? Not just, do you take an extra day, even though you're starting in August?
Well, from a process standpoint, how frequently has the calendar changed over the years?
It was, I don't know, Laura, if you remember...
There's tons of discussion, but it never changes.
When, no, we went from...
We always had a four-day weekend, Labor Day weekend.
We did for a long time, and then...
Saying maybe it was, um...
Four, five years ago?
Oh, longer than that.
You think?
Yeah, for 10 years ago.
To start going on the Friday.
I guess my concern would be, I know that you've socialized this, you know, internally. I would think that the, more so than just the 16 folks around the table, parents would or ought to have some voice in having a change that may impact summer on the beginning end or on the latter end, and I don't know that that voice is heard just by the folks around the table.
We're the representatives, but in other words...
But there's no polling, you know, there's no ability to go out and...
When do we have to, when's that to be set in stone?
The thing about the calendar, and so, you know, perhaps I shouldn't have brought it up, but I thought it was worth at least the conversation. But the thing about the calendar is, we really should, we are behind. We probably should have had a look at this in the individual meetings prior to this. So it's a big ask, and my sense is that there's not that kind of overwhelming support for a change. So my suggestion, hearing the different voices, my suggestion is that you, that if you find it agreeable, is to go with the calendar that you had essentially this year, which is the first one I presented to you. And that's essentially no change, and that way, that could be voted, hopefully, this evening, and we could move on. Because people do ask, they have summer plans, and they want to know.
But I would like to make the suggestion that as part of the entry plan and the other things we're looking at, you know, the half-days, full-days, structure of the schedule, not necessarily March vacation.
The impetus...
Yes. Let's discuss that.
Get rid of February.
The impetus from parents or staff, the desire to be able to travel on August 31st for potential end of summer, you know, where is that? And we're really balancing the impacts that has on families and staff versus consuming five full snow days and going into that fourth week of June.
Well, at the moment, parents are expecting to go have school on the Friday before things, before Labor Day.
But this must have been brought up somehow in your... What's, what brought this second concept to the table? I'm still trying to get a grasp of where, where is it, I'm trying to balance the...
Me. Me, it wasn't, I mean, maybe a few people, Michael, have mentioned it to me. It's just something that I have experienced and thought it was good for, frankly, for families and kids. But you're bringing, I mean, hearing a lot of reasons why, you know, it could be reconsidered. So what if we just simply move to potentially look at that question for the future, but not necessarily this year?
Sounds good.
So all the moving parts here, though, I mean, one would be, can you open up with teachers a day or two earlier than what's on this calendar? And then preserve all Labor Day. But putting aside the contract issue, let's say that that's one option. No, it would have to obviously be negotiated, but let's, if we're going to examine this, let's look at all of the different levers we have here. We have the concerns about going too far into June, and I think that that's pretty strong out there. If we started earlier, but then preserved some of these extra days around day holidays like Labor Day, that may be a better solution. Alternatively, maybe we trim a day off from, we don't go a full week in February.
So it sounds like a discussion for another time, but before this time next year, right? So just a straw poll, does anybody have any interest really in changing the original suggestions?
I would have been in favor if Dr. Kio had said, "I really think that this is the right thing for the administration and the staff," then at some point, I would trust that that was the right recommendation. But if, but if you're kind of pulling back from that, then I'm fine staying with what was in the package.
I'm feeling like it needs more conversation, and that wasn't, there just wasn't enough opportunity tonight.
Okay, so we, this is another vote for all three committees?
Yes. So, a motion at the region to approve the Dover Sherburne Public Schools academic calendar on 2018, 2019, where we go, the students go to school and the teachers on August 31st. First.
Yeah. It's just the original.
Still move.
Dover.
Still move.
Second. Sherburne.
Sherburne.
Second. Yes, okay.
At the region, those in favor?
Dover, those in favor?
Sherburne, those in favor? unanimous, passes. All right. Moving on, item number eight, bus contract extension.
So we have a summary memo about what we're asking all the companies to do, which means that the contract that has all five years, as is our past practice, when we go out for bids for our busing transportation, we, from procurement reasons, are only allowed to sign a three-year contract, but they are allowed to include a two-year extension in that bidding package. So it's that juncture in time where our third year is up, and the other two are here to be extended. That's, those are our bonus years, so I would be surprised if you guys say no, because what they're, what Conley does is, they, every time we sign a new contract, they buy a new set of buses. So they front load the first three years, even the last two years are basically that leftover that increase in our transportation costs. Those numbers that you're seeing tonight are actually already back into all three districts' budgets, so we've already have taken that into account, but I just think that each of the committees have formally just approved to extend two years. There's nothing to sign, I'll just communicate some Conley that approved it.
Does anybody have any questions about what's in the document? Explanation?
This goes back to the original contract, though, that was sold to us, that we were told that they were going to do optimization, and they had new software and all that other stuff. This was at the end of, have quite fifteen...
For bus routes, my question.
Yeah, the bus company. And I never heard anything about that in the subsequent three years of the contract.
I believe, I believe, Michael, I recall that at some point in the last three, five years, they did try new software, but based on our roads, our bus stops, the new software wasn't much.
Is there any way to get a formal response from the company as to what happened to that?
I'm sorry to inquire, but I think Claire is right, because we do have a lot of unique streets and the way the turns go, and they actually re, they spent a lot of time driving each of those themselves and guiding our kids, so we're getting...
If you could get a formal response from that?
Again, some of this ties back to our goals of social emotional... We're still having 635A and makeup times for regional kids in some parts of Dover and Sherburne.
That's a good point.
I did see something about that in the entry plan.
Yes, so I have two questions. I noticed in Andrew's presentation that you had something about bus routes. And I, is there any conflict where that couldn't be either addressed or considered? I wasn't really, there's a lot to read.
The place that covered the bus route question was that a lot of people brought up the start time piece. There are still many, 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 many stakeholders in this system who are interested in revisiting that, and not necessarily, you know, flipping it over completely, but at least looking at all of the possibilities, including whether we're being as efficient as possible with our buses, even if it meant squeezing out, you know, 20 minutes. There are a lot of people who are really, really expressing interest in that, so that is one of the findings, in that there will likely be a strategic, in fact, there is a strategic priority on that.
So we've got four close...
No.
We could still work within the...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Last year, we actually looked at that and changed four buses that tickered in two from middle school, and I think they've kept changing in Sherburne, but we tried to squeeze more of that time out. If you remember, I think I told each of the school committees that we're affected, that we did do some changes to the income tax.
And it may be that there's nothing there for that start time question.
But that won't be impacted by the extension, we can still negotiate.
So, yes.
So Don, I'd like to invite a motion at the region to approve the two-year extension.
Still move.
Second?
Dover, same motion. Second.
Sherburne, we lost somebody.
Still move.
Second, okay.
Those in favor at the region?
Five.
Favorite voters?
Sherburne. All in favor? And did you get Scott left, so?
Thanks, Jamie.
All right. So, item number nine, proposed budgets overview. So I wasn't at the agenda meeting, this is, couldn't be briefed?
Yes.
Very brief, one-page document that essentially says...
Just a memo for you guys off the top of your head.
So that all school committee members are aware of what the budgets look like through the various committees.
Okay.
That's all.
And on the back, it has some key dates for your open hearing and the towns that are in there.
Thank you, Don.
I thought this was a great idea.
Yes.
So if we have any questions, we can submit them to the chair for the next month's meeting, right?
Yes, you're welcome.
No, efficient. Efficient.
This is the type of thing you need to go on, like this school calendar conversation.
Okay.
All right. So that's great. Did, Don, honestly, did you have any comments about this, or just for our education?
It's the first pass of all the budgets, so you can sort of see, you know, acting as a pre-K through 12 system, it's good for you not to operate just in your own little committee, so you put it all together, and in the back, just gave a little more explanation of where everyone stands. I mentioned that the region has not really done anything with their revenues yet, so their sort of increase, well, for supplement purposes, will go down, which will be able to do a little more revenue conducting, so don't take that number and think that's where we are. It won't come down on the expense side necessarily, although if it can, it's also going to give more revenue to reduce the assessments that we're looking for. So I think that's what we're just trying to communicate. And then again, the key dates are in the back for your own committee open hearings and open contracts.
Okay, thank you. So, item 10, it's a consent agenda approval of minutes from October 30th. Anybody had any changes for those minutes?
No.
Can we vote on this all at once?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll vote for a final motion at the region.
Still move.
Our motion to...
Trying to make it easy for me.
Second.
Okay, Sherburne. Still move. Second.
Vote at the region?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Dover.
Sherburne. Okay, Mr. Carries, all right. Item 11, communications, for everybody's reading, pleasure.
It's on one.
A move to adjourn. Any other, what's our next meeting?
April.
The joint committee.
Just a reminder, get your shirts.
Motion to adjourn.
Still move. Thank you.